Okay, hold on a second. We are rolling.
Yes, okay, I'll call a meeting of the Planning and Zoning Commission, the City of Bisbee, December fourteenth, two thousand twenty-three to order. I'll do a roll call. Mike Havlin is not present. David Brown is not present. David Cobb?
Here, present.
Douglas Dunn here. Alicia Spirite?
Here.
Sandy Housman?
Here.
And Doug Taylor is not, so, and we've got some staff people here as well. Emmanuel. Our building inspectors, expecters.
I'm there in jail.
Call the public, of which there is none here. We'll go into Agenda Item One, Public Hearing on Proposed Amendment to the Zoning Code, Possible Recommendation to the Mayor and Council, Consideration of a Proposed Amendment to the Zoning Code, Article Seven, Section Seven, Point Two, Point Six, General Requirements Applicable to All Signs by adding quote "H" to the General Requirements Applicable to, let's see where, "Applicable to All Signs Which Will Explicitly Prohibit the Placing of Signs or Cones That Mislead the Public Into Viewing Public Street Parking as Private." Staff report?
Yeah, okay, so, um, essentially, through that one, we're just gonna say, "No sign shall be erected, installed, or maintained at or near any street intersection or any location where, by reason of its position, shape, color, or illumination, may interfere with, obstruct the view of, or be confused with any authorized traffic sign, signal, or traffic regulating device such as traffic cones, or make use of the word 'no parking,' or any word, phrase, symbol, or character in such manner as to interfere with, mislead, or confuse drivers, riders, or pedestrians."
Okay. A little call for a public hearing, of which there is no one here, so I'll close the public hearing. Commission discussion. We talked about this in the last meeting. Are we ready to move forward?
I just have one interpretation question based upon the language. In the situation where you have garages adjacent to the street, and which individuals utilize them, a "no parking" or "no blocking" sign may be a vantage, you know, to be able to get your car out of your driveway. So is there a gray area, or are we just gonna leave it to the neighbors to make peace and resolve?
Everyone would love to see that. That case should be done, taken care of, because there's so many of these garages that are not garages, and that door hasn't been opened in a decade or more. And they're not, they're not holding a vehicle. If they are, the vehicle is inoperable. So it's not really a garage. And they put up those signs and make it like nobody can park in front of there, and where that should be public parking when it's not being used as a garage. And we've got too much of that in Old Bisbee, and people turn public, because these are public areas, they turn it into private parking.
So it'll just, it'll be what it is and...
And we'd keep an eye on that and definitely see if they are using it for parking, but once we start, they start parking, you know what they're gonna do? They're gonna say, "Oh, I'm using this all the time, I'm using it, using it." But what we'd like to see, we'll keep an eye on it.
It is, I know the, um, I guess I have a little concern about that in, you know, if it's a driveway, it's a driveway.
Driveway.
In front of a garage, there can be driveways in front of garages, but there's many examples in town of there not being a driveway in front of a garage. And there's the one place, like in front of the Circle K, there is a public right-of-way that goes right in front of those garages that are there on the north side of the Circle K parking lot.
Uh-huh.
And they block it all off by parking in it, and there's none of those units there being used as garages, but people park there, and the residents come out and scream and holler and have a bit, and they, they make, they make a spectacle of themselves over something that's really not tenable.
The people that have garages, I'm thinking of one I passed by somewhere in between Warren and Lachlan, I think, where there's a garage door, and there is the driveway, designated driveway, but I know there are parked cars in there. It's not used as a garage, but it does have the drive into it. What would, what would that be?
If that's on public, if that's on private property, they have the right to park in front of the garage, yeah?
And also are right to not have it blocked, right?
They have a right not to have it blocked because it's, you know, like people, people sometimes don't have garages, they have curb cuts so that they're parking alongside their houses on, on, off Toonsoo Canyon.
Right.
And that would be rated the same way, that would, that would, that a garage that had a curb cut.
So a curb cut would designate driveway, and they can't block it?
I, I believe so, yes.
Okay, okay.
I strongly believe so, yeah.
Makes sense.
You notice there's one typographical error, and that is next to the last sentence. In terms of the document itself, you've got the, let's see.
Says "work."
Words, it should be rather words.
Yeah, Nina has fixed that. I'm not quite sure why I'm seeing that in this staff report, but...
It's not on the public notice side. I don't know if that makes a right, you know?
Yeah, I think Nina has fixed it. I'm, I'm, and I think maybe it's just an old staff report or something, an old copy and paste.
Are we ready to take action?
Yep.
Do you have a motion?
I do, I approve.
Are we to offer the benefit of the proposed motion there? Just read.
Oh, okay, thank you. Um, I move that the Planning and Zoning Commission recommend to Mayor and Council a proposed amendment to the zoning code, Article Seven, Section Seven, Point Two, Point Six, General Requirements Applicable to All Signs by adding "H" to the General Requirements Applicable to All Signs Which Will Explicitly Prohibit the Placing of Signs, Cones That Mislead the Public Into Viewing Public Street Parking as Private.
I'd like to second that.
Good. I'll have a roll call then. David Cobb?
Yes.
Douglas Dunn, yes. Alicia Spirite?
Yes.
Sandy Housman?
Yes.
Get carried. Move on to Agenda Item Two, which is a discussion of manufactured housing, modular homes, and tiny homes, of which you provided us quite a bit of information.
Yes. Um, I created a PowerPoint to explain it a little bit more, just so, I know last time we had the meeting, there was a bit of, kind of, people were still kind of, kind of figuring out the details, the differences. Um, so what I kind of, you know, was shooting for was to reach our, you know, our citywide goals of updating zoning and expanding allowable uses, allowable housing types. Um, and I want to, to expand it to, to maybe potentially create an overlay or something to, to kind of address the changing trends and incentivizing infill, but also maintaining our development standards, our design standards, safety standards in our growth areas. I'm thinking, you know, San Jose and some like Tin Town and Bakersville in areas all that are Old Bisbee or Warren. Um, so, you know, and I think that we can, if we have a lot of intention of what we do, I think we can create a really great, you know, infill incentive to create more housing that's affordable. Um, so I wanted to talk a little bit about just some ideas to discuss, talking about the difference between affordable housing and tiny homes. I think that tiny homes can be affordable, but I don't think affordable housing has to be tiny homes, so, just thinking about that. Um, and then maybe in the code, I wasn't, I was, I didn't really find a spot that says specifically what the minimum house size is, so it'd be good to maybe talk about maybe making, you know, some more, some language for that. Um, thinking about affordable products on the market for, you know, that people could live in and ways to incentivize affordable housing, thinking about manufactured homes, maybe multifamily, fourplexes, townhomes. So, that's one thing I was thinking about. Um, I, I sent you in the packet, building standards for the manufactured homes, and essentially, um, they, you know, they follow HUD standards, and in order to be, uh, to be underwritten and to have the loans insured, they have to do a small, a certain, a level of standard. So I'm thinking that's not, it's, they're pretty solid housing. Anyway, but I want to talk a little bit about the difference between tiny homes, manufactured homes, and RVs. So, or tiny homes, I'm sorry, removable tiny homes, or tiny homes on wheels. Uh, tiny homes, these are smaller dwellings, um, kind of an all-encompassing term, so, you know, that some of them can be called tiny homes, but be following the standards of RVs, or they can be following the standards of the International Building Code. Um, but, um, you know, they can be on permanent foundations, it can be site-built. Uh, and then you can see, the next one is tiny homes on wheels, removable tiny homes, which is kind of popular these days, and noticing that seems to be the, a large amount of the stuff you see on the market when you look at, when you're looking for tiny homes, because people really love the idea of moving something somewhere. Um, and, you know, this is a picture of something that, like that. So, you know, it's got the wheels, um, and there's, uh, you know, some municipalities have allowed them as ADUs, and some places haven't allowed them, you know, so it's a thought. Um, oh, and then last is RVs, recreational vehicles. They, um, follow the ANSI standards for RV construction, so there is a standard, although I don't know if aesthetically, there's some, you know, a direction we'd want to go in, you know, and I just found a picture of something that is very clearly an RV. There's no, you know, there's no ambiguity there. Um, so, um, and I, also there's a thing called, um, model, I think park models, RVs, and those, and those kind of follow more like the standards of these tiny homes on wheels, um, but they can be a bit bigger, you know, so I thought, you know, it'd be interesting to talk about all those. And then, um, so the, kind of the goal is to address the needs of the community and maintain our safety and aesthetics. Um, and I included in this picture, um, a sort of multifamily one, and then this is a small manufactured home. Um, I think it's actually, you know, follows the standards of manufactured homes and not tiny homes, and it's pretty small, and it's affordable, it's around sixty-something thousand zip base. And then the bottom picture is kind of, uh, some communities around Arizona that have, that allow kind of more houses clustered together in a way that people own their own units. It's almost like a, like a cooperative or a condo unit, I guess. Um, so, anyway, so thoughts I was thinking about was doing a zoning overlay, because the idea, because that was your idea that you had mentioned, was a zoning overlay, and I thought it'd be pretty good to, um, to, if you allowed an overlay zone in, say, our growth areas, you could regulate, um, exactly what, you know, you would allow in there, you know, because you'd have the R1 zoning allowed, but then you'd, you could expand it, expand the uses with stipulations, you know, it seems like, you know, like something that might be workable for everybody. Um, I like the idea, maybe pocket neighborhoods, cottage courts, things like that, where you essentially are allowing like several houses on a lot, like, or, you know, kind of a parcel, and kind of clustered together, and it can help, you know, people can create a neighborhood, people that might know each other or have, uh, shared lifestyles or aesthetics or something. Um, and, um, I have a zoning map here of Bisbee, and you can see that the light yellow is all, um, R1, meaning that you're only, it only allows one house per six thousand, six thousand square foot lot. And, um, and I was looking at some of the, um, the general, the general plan, uh, talking points or policies from the last plan, and they, um, mentioned that, uh, the state legislation authorizes infill, the infill incentive plan, which would expedite, could expedite zoning or relieve from development standards, uh, as part of their methods for allowing more housing, uh, and encouraging infill, which I think, you know, we can do in a, in a nice way. So, conclusion, affordability. I don't know if I've had a chance to read that article, I also included in the packet, but, um, it's really, you know, we're living in a time when rent prices and home prices are just kind of through the roof, and, uh, so I, um, and I think that, you know, allowing more housing with standards is, uh, would be great for helping Bisbee reach their goals of affordability and maintaining affordability, so, and also fighting homelessness. So, that's my spiel.
Yeah, you presented interesting research there, in the other official packet about homeless and the, um, factors that lead to homeless.
Yeah.
And, and housing is number one.
Yeah.
Study that you surveyed there, so that's interesting.
Yeah. Yeah, so, I don't know. I don't, so, anyway, I, I hope that cleared up kind of the biggest differences between the different types of tiny homes and, you know, affordable units, because I also was looking at, um, if you see that, um, on the very first page, I have, um, this bottom image here is a manufactured home, and they have stuff that kind of fits the standards, I think, that, you know, and that's like a hundred thousand dollar model, it's like two-bedroom, two-bath or something. And so I'm thinking about like, what's affordable, you know, because I was like, one of the things I was wondering is, you know, I know a lot of people have this fear that someone's gonna pull in a travel trailer, right, and, or, I don't know how people feel about those, like, long skinny trailers, you know, mobile homes actually, manufactured homes, you know. Uh, but I was thinking about, yeah, potentially expanding uses, especially in areas in Bisbee, like in San Jose, where there's a lot of empty open land, you know. But I guess the challenge is, you want to have things kind of close to utilities, because I think, you know, further out you get, the more you're gonna have to be extending your utilities and your sewer lines, and I'm under the impression that costs millions of dollars for a developer to do, as opposed to infilling somewhere that already has a sewer line running by, you know, or the water line, so, I don't know. But yeah, allowing multifamily, fourplexes, or, you know, allowing people to maybe buy and build, and, uh, they could, you know, potentially, um, pay for their own mortgage by renting out those units, but also in, in the turn, in turn, creating more housing, rental housing for people, especially when we're thinking about, uh, you know, there's some growth potential, potentially, I'm sorry, potentially happening with the, um, the port of entry opening in Douglas, you know, in the near future. So, yeah, I don't know. How do you feel about that?
I have a question for Joe, I think.
Yeah.
Do you get a lot of inquiries about this type of housing, about manufactured or modular or tiny homes?
Well, you'd have to define what a lot is.
Well, so...
I get, I get three or four a year.
Uh-huh. And are they looking for, are they thinking of something that they could put in Old Bisbee, or are they talking about some of the outlying areas?
Anything we're talking about today is inappropriate.
Right, right.
But they're, they're mostly talking about outlying areas, and they get, they get, it, it goes on a broad, I'm putting all these together, you know, and it's a real broad spectrum of what people are asking about. You know, it's like that lady over in Don Louie, or looking at property at Don Louie, and she, she was all set on, she wanted to have a, um, a little house that was made in a container, that would be dropped off, laid in the dirt, set in the dirt there, and instant house. And there's just no provision for that, and I don't think that's, I think it'd be fine for, for rural areas maybe, but I don't think, I don't think it is appropriate for, for us to do lots, you know, some of those things. But we, we get, um, all kinds of questions.
And how do you address them?
Well, for starters, like with the, with the tiny homes, the first thing I ask is, is this gonna be on wheels, or is this gonna be delivered and set with a crane? Because those are two different worlds.
Yes.
One is acceptable, and the other one is unacceptable currently.
Uh-huh. Yeah.
Right.
And I, and I know that that's, because almost all of them that I've dealt with so far have been wheels, that they, that's what they wanted to bring them, bring them in with the RV type.
So, anyone that has approached has had the one that is not acceptable at this time, and that's been declined, and they have not proceeded.
Well, they're asking, at the point of asking questions, not so much putting them in place.
Uh-huh.
But they, um, that, we don't have, the only opportunity you have to do that right now is the alternate lodging park, as defined in our zoning code. You can do it there, and it is specifically approved for those.
And other, um, places that have done this, um, do they put it in the code, as you referenced in the, um, rent increases section? Do they put it into their, into their general plan and then advertise it, or is it, you know, is it something that is used to kind of like what we're talking about, about, um, energy saving?
Oh, tax incentivize.
You know?
Incentivize.
The tax incentives?
Tax incentives, incentives in any way, I suppose.
Yeah.
Do we want to incentivize it, or just have it out there so that it's easier for Joe to handle the issues?
I mean...
Because you're the person that they come to at this point, and it only happens a couple times a year?
Sometimes.
Is that right? You said a couple times a year?
Yeah, three or four times a year.
I mean, it increased, it's increasing. I, you know, we had that meeting with the lady. She wanted to build a, one where people could bring their own tiny home and parcel it out and sell the parcels, and also build a couple too. So, interesting, but she, but she didn't, she said she didn't want to have anything on wheels, you know. So, that's why I'm thinking a lot about the differentiating, you know, between the two, because I think about affordable housing options, and then a tiny home on wheels, which, you know, can, can be kind of pricey even for such a small space, you know.
And the standards that they're built to are not, are not even the HUD standards that are used for, for local homes, or, I should say, um, you know, manufactured homes and that. Those are different, those are different standards.
Yeah, yeah.
It seems we just remove the adjective, tiny, manufactured, module, prefab, kit, and just go straight to code. A structure shall comply with one of the following or IBC whatever.
Yeah.
And just kind of leave it, so that, you just make up a new term, right? That's what they did with tiny homes, and then somewhere like small homes, oh, now I can buy a kit on Amazon.
Right.
Right? It's like, who cares what you call it? Just make sure it meets a code, or that qualifies.
Yeah.
And then we don't have to dispute all these adjectives.
Uh, that's true, yeah, I don't know if you could follow that standard.
We just have to figure out what codes.
Which, yeah. I mean, I guess the challenge with manufactured homes is they, I, I think they're safe, and, and, you know, they're insured by the, by the government, they have a set of standards that are federal, you know, and, um, so I, I think it's not a safety issue, but people, I, I think, have, they take, you know, issue with the fact that it's a manufactured home, or just falls under that category, you know. But like I said, I, I found a lot that actually, um, they actually, um, really aesthetically can fit in a lot of the neighborhoods, especially in, in San Jose. Um, also I want to mention multifamily, allowing multifamily, you know, duplexes and fourplexes, something that's not, that doesn't have a big footprint, but allows more families and more houses and more affordable housing on these lots as well, you know.
We already have, oh, I'm sorry.
Hold on.
I wasn't speaking.
We already have zoning for manufactured homes.
Say it again, please.
We already have zoning for manufactured homes.
Yep.
Um, can we just expand that? Because that's not allowed in the historic district, but it's allowed in all the areas we've been talking about.
You know, we had, um, that came to the, to the Board of Adjustments several months ago now, and, um, the neighbors came with pitchforks and, you know, like a frankenstall and torches, because they didn't want that in their, in their neighborhood, and what was being proposed wasn't identifiable as, as a manufactured home. It really wasn't. It was a T-shaped, and the way it was set up and all. I was, I was quite impressed with it, but that name manufactured home made them feel like they were losing their property values, and, and they showed up in math, so it's gonna be a hard sell.
But they were in a manufactured home zoning?
No.
No.
Oh, they were?
No, they, they, that's why I went to the Board of Adjustments, because we thought that this was, we're the event to maybe grant an exception, because it is so different than what we're used to in manufactured homes, which, you know, like the ones that Emmanuel had. That, that it was, it was, it was interesting, at least. I was very impressed, I wasn't aware of those. The other thing about this is, um, I think you guys, what you were looking at about, at the prices, at these, um, the manufactured homes, and these were some pretty nice ones, they're about a hundred, they're starting at a hundred dollars a square foot, which is a lot less than you can get worked on for right now. But when you looked at the, at the, um, tiny homes, they were not affordable in that sense, because they were, they were two hundred some square foot, you know.
Yeah, they're really expensive.
So I, I think the other thing here, right, removing the adjective, is like DRB level, right? Like, if you're gonna take one, like one of these, this is the one on the front page, if you were to look at it, you're like, hey, that could fit right in in a Warren neighborhood.
Yeah.
But there has to be a board to say, hey, let's make sure it's not this eyesore, where the community can come with their pitchforks and be, be assured that we're not gonna let an eyesore be just plopped wherever, you know.
Oh, they don't want to burn me in that. I'm sorry, they're, they're so, they said, you know, the guy called me up and told me I should be fired for even allowing that to come before the board, which my job is to take care of. If a map comes in there and pays us like four hundred dollars or whatever it is for that special use permit, and, and putting those, putting that out to the, to the neighborhood, you know, they're all notified, that's my job to do, not, that's not discretionary.
Yeah, that, that, you know, that neighborhood, I guess they have some covenants in, in place in that area, so that's, I wouldn't, you know, ask to put an overlay or to change zoning in that neighborhood. I'd be like, you guys just, you can have it, just, just like it is, you know. Like, it, it, it's really about being flexible and not ruffling too many feathers, but, you know.
And there, there's an interesting case, right? You look around, right? No, no manufactured homes in the historic district, but right when you're exiting off of eighty and going through the tunnel, there's a giant manufactured home right there.
Yeah, there is.
Um, so Bisbee Road, really great historic brick buildings, and then you got these two houses that are way offset. Well, why? Well, because somebody went to it, and they're like, well, you don't conform, so just push it back from the street. That was the decision-makers at the time.
Yeah.
You know, get, get your eyesore out of here. So it's like, you have conflict everywhere throughout the city.
Yep.
So that DRB, that review, that blending, I think is a critical piece if we're gonna implement an overlay.
Mm-hmm. The blending is a critical piece?
Yeah, because aesthetically, similarity, right, in a neighborhood.
Yeah, yeah.
You go to Warren, you go to Bisbee.
Yeah.
And it's almost like each one could have its own decision factor to ensure whatever it is, it conforms.
Yeah.
And meets the character.
I mean, it's interesting, as I, the areas that I'm thinking about are kind of a hodgepodge of a lot of different styles. Like, I think about, you know, San Jose, or even Saginaw, you know, it's, there's kind of a, kind of a lot of different things going on around there, you know. So it's kind of interesting to, I almost want to say that I, I would like to work on crafting a, a sort of style, or a sort of a, you know, have a set of rules and standards to shape the community as it grows, you know, or changes. And I, I like the idea of, you know, like, letting affordability be a factor, but also really, you know, making it easier to do more affordable things, but also being, like, particularly, you know, nobody can pull in a, some, you know, a travel trailer from nineteen fifty-three or something, you know.
Well, there's supposed to be a concept, right? Like, it's manufactured in a plant in Phoenix.
Mm-hmm.
You try to get a contractor to build a house around here, there's lead time, there's resource challenges.
Yeah.
You know, it's convenient.
Yeah.
When they have robots putting them together, you know.
Right, right. I mean, I don't know, I was thinking about like the price, if somebody has a, a lot, you know, or you can buy a lot in Saginaw for like thirty-five thousand, I've seen them around, especially, right, even the high prices, and if you wanted to put a two-bedroom or one-bedroom, you know, and you can manage to get it in there for seventy-five thousand, you know, it's, you have that lower price point, and I think that, you know, well, you know, and I think getting, getting, um, you know, a loan from the USDA or the government, or, you know, HUD or something, I feel like you, you have to have some level of good credit, or okay credit, or right credit.
Six-twenty, I'm over.
Good enough credit. So, I don't know. So, you know, I was thinking, you know, if, if it would be important to have a specific standards, you know, it's hard to really say, you know, because somebody could pull in something that meets the standards of HUD code, but, I don't know, maybe, it might not meet the Bisbee aesthetic standards, right? And so it's like, would you allow some? And so it's like, would you allow something that was something like your very stereotypical manufactured home? Or would you only, you know, allow style guidelines? Like I, I've been looking at a lot of different products and stuff, home products. And a lot of stuff actually is cute, you know, it's, um, like the one I, you know, I showed you a picture of, it's, um, you know, some stuff's modern, but, you know, but I just wanna let you know about that, that, that idea, you know.
Well, a lot of the area is, a lot of what I see on the zoning map. And I, I went to the zoning map on my computer and looked at each one. They're, um, you know, Saginaw, Galena, Tin Town, parts of San Jose. Dona Luja, all have zoning for manufactured homes.
Well, they, I mean, you can see the, the bright yellow is, is it, I'm sorry, zoning for manufactured, but, but a vast majority is single family. R1 or whatever, which, you know.
Boy, I could swear that so many of those had manufactured home zonings. No?
Right.
Um, like Tin Town, Saginaw, Galena.
There's, in Saginaw, both ends, on the very ends, all of A Street and the west side of B Street is, you can put in, you can put in, um, modular homes.
Yeah.
Manufactured homes. And then on the very extreme end, past N Street, you can put in, in manufactured homes. That is, um.
And San Jose?
Is not rated as, by my understanding, it is, if I remember correctly, it's all R1.
Yeah. And then Dona Luja has it.
The map doesn't really, that we have isn't really showing that correctly. I was, um, coming with Javier on that earlier. I think I need Stacy correcting.
Okay. I just left online in the Bisbee website.
Yeah.
Those maps, those maps on our website are gonna be more accurate than, than what we're using here today.
A lot, a lot of it was manufactured in the outer area.
Yeah, um, Tin, uh, Tin Town, I believe is manufactured.
Not even one?
But not, but not.
Dona Luja?
Dona Luja is.
Dona Luja for sure, yeah.
Yeah.
Manufactured would encompass tiny homes, right? Because technically a tiny home I would think is, is manufactured. It's just marketed without higher aesthetic.
Hmm, well, I mean, tiny home really is, it's, it's such a, it's a funny word. But, um, you can build a tiny home, right, that's site-built or the tiny home kind of follows more of like the.
It's like Alicia said, it's kind of wide open.
It's a wide.
It would, it would comply with the city's code requirements for manufactured homes.
Right now, right, well, for men, most of them that we're talking about are qualified manufactured homes. You could, you could build a tiny home site-built too. But it's just, it's, it's a wide open, it is a wide open classification that we need to refine. So we can all talk about the same thing.
Right.
And Cochise County has a page on tiny home requirements.
I was gonna ask about that.
Yeah, I, I.
Oh, wow.
Nice.
They've defined it and they've listed, um, you know, requirements. Minimum room sizes, exceptions, ceiling height, appliances, all of that.
That's part of what we should be using as our template.
Yeah, pretty simple.
The appropriate, the appropriate part that we, that you guys would like.
And the appro, the, um, the project on Naco Highway that Kathleen Buchanan is doing, are you familiar with that at all? I don't know whether that's in the city or in the county. You are?
It's in the city.
They're, they're by Collins Road? That's the city.
And she has a project underway that is going to, my understanding, have several tiny homes. You're familiar with it?
Yeah, we met with her. Yeah, it's like thirty tiny homes.
I'm sorry?
Thirty, around thirty.
So she's making that happen in the city, so.
Yeah, I mean, well, the thing is, with, yeah, because there, yeah, it's, it's zone C. Well, I guess it just depends, right? It's zone C1, so that allows for her to have, I believe, those smaller thirty by seventy lots.
Yeah, but C, it's a C2.
Yeah, and then.
A lot of smaller.
And then, and then, um, and then, but also do, do you allow modular or manufacturer type buildings in C, in the C zoning, commercial zoning? Cause I, I didn't see anything about.
Modular is, has the same issue, is the same as the site-built or codes.
Commercial does.
They're, they're allowed in there, but manufactured homes are not.
Yeah.
Without, but they're, they're gonna wind up having, they don't have anything that's, that's, um, solid right now because it's gonna have to be, it's gonna have to come up with a subdivision plan and that's kind of.
And utilities to follow that, right? I mean, that's.
Oh, yeah. And there's gonna be a lot of oversight. And there's gonna be a site committee will look at it and so on before, before anything can proceed.
Yeah, and, and she wants to sell those lots out. She wants to build, to bring in some homes and own them, but she also wants to sell a lot of them to individuals who want to find their own homes to put on there.
Along with the land, correct?
Yeah, so she'd like to sell like each part of each lot. And so I'm thinking like.
Is that subdividing land like that? Is that a, a big issue as well? I would think it would be.
It will be. I think, I think the subdivision code is gonna have to be followed. And it's, it's not the friendliest one.
Yeah, that's another meeting.
Well, it kind of speaks to what, what you're talking about here tonight. Does the city wanna make this type of project easier or does it want to?
People seem to want that, yeah. You know, I, um, the people in the city, everybody I talk with, maybe, I don't know, everybody, but many people I do talk with.
The people who wanna do it, one of the people who are their neighbors might not want a thirty unit, um, on Naco Highway where they move to be away from the thirty units they live by before they moved, you know.
Yeah, I mean, I, I, I look at the site around there and I think the closest, like, um, residential area is, uh, senior apartments that are kind of next to it there.
So it's in tone with that more or less, huh?
Well, you know, it's interesting. I, I mean, part, part of it is, is because the lady wants to sort of skirt the, uh, Collins Road and, uh, Naco Highway with retail of some sort. And that's something that she'd also sell the lots to, out to and somebody would come in with their own site plan and idea. But I thought, you know, it'd be great to do something where you could allow some sort of retail along there and the people that live in the senior apartments could have a place to walk to, you know. Like work on, on site, on the site where you could kind of make it walkable and pedestrian-friendly, especially for seniors who wanna go get their morning constitutional. They don't have a, you know, they, they don't wanna have to get in the car and drive somewhere to go take a walk, you know. So, I don't know. It's a thought, you know. I, I, I definitely think that it's something worth looking into, but also, you know, I, I think about the general plan update and sort of like the, the standards that you want, you know, for growth in San Jose in our growth areas, cause, you know, it's important.
Just tying this all back to affordable housing.
Uh-huh, yeah.
So just, I'm playing on semantics here, but affordable versus attainable has a distinction based upon funding.
Yep.
But like you talk to developers and you see the, the great report that you had about rent increases in Arizona and a lot of developers will tell you it's because of the code and regis, legislation that makes it too hard to develop something that is within attainable income.
Yeah.
Reach.
Yeah.
So providing attainable housing is a function of us deciding how we relax or direct our codes. To promote more housing.
Yeah, yes.
I think it's very true, you know.
You know.
What do we wanna do with a, what direction do we wanna give the staff as the next step?
Do we just take this into consideration when we're reviewing the, the, uh, plan, general plan? Or do we wanna, um, look at changing the code to allow it at this time?
Maybe have a look at what the, um, other communities that have made these changes, what their codes look like and see whether we think they're appropriate for what we are right now.
Or maybe target infill areas or.
Yeah.
But you know, the reason why you're, you're, you have this in front of you is because we were given, um, direction from elected, um, representative to, um, start working on this right now.
From who?
What's that?
From who?
One of our elected representatives. And so that's, that's the reason why it's up here tonight, or that we even, we have brought to you guys. And then that, that's gonna wind up like, what they were wanting was to be able to have some areas where some of these, um, like, uh, like the, the more refined manufactured homes would, would possibly fit in and be able to, um, be used and to amend what we're, what we're permitting in an R1 zone, maybe. But not all of them because, because we don't want the neighbors fighting with the city there and, and.
Right.
You know, we are represent, we, we all represent the whole city, not just was one portion, but that's, but that's what was the, um, the goal.
I, I'm, I don't think that I'm in favor of legislating aesthetics.
Yeah, that's fair.
As big as a snob as I am in real life and working with the city here, I don't wanna be the guy saying, not in my town, even though I live in old Bisbee, you know.
Right.
And I can appreciate neighbors not being into something new without some introduction to it, understanding of it. Like the people who didn't like the L-shaped manufactured home.
Yeah.
They didn't, they didn't hear the L shape or see the L shape. They heard the manufactured home.
Right, right. I mean, I, it, it, it could be a thing where you, I mean, a, a lot of times I think about, um, how the messaging is, right? You'd say, we're going to make some allowances for different things. And, you know, you could, you could put together a brochure or a guide or a website that kind of gives people an idea of what it could look like. And it's like, well, it's either this or having more homeless people camped out and, you know, dumping trash or whatever, you know. Just sort of like, it's one of those things where it's just kind of like, we're kind of stuck between these two worlds, you know. Or your neighbor's having to move away, being priced out or something, or you being priced out, so. I always think about things weighing, you know.
Unfortunately, these, these solutions aren't going to help our homeless population.
Right. Well, I mean, yeah.
You know, hopefully Kilcrest will do something for them.
Yeah.
If there's an elected official that wants to working on this, shouldn't they be present telling us what and why?
Oh, I think, I think they're casting out a net and seeing how it's, how it's working and how we can, we can, um, you know, um, pick the, pick the pearls out, pick the pearls out of the oysters and, and come up with a good solution by, you know, going over it.
Well, there's certainly certain sections of town where the existing housing is not very attractive. So any replacement of that, some of it's completely, you know, some of the eyesores that we've been complaining about. Others are just substandard housing. And so any, you would not think that those neighbors would be in uproar over, over any improvement.
Right.
But, um, and I don't know what the details, the L-shaped thing was what went before the board of adjustments, is that?
Yeah.
And so there was huge, you were saying, objection from the community, but the board of adjustments seemed to be sympathetic to the proposal. Was that?
No.
Huh?
The, the board of adjustments went with what the neighbor, they, they, they're gonna follow it. And I think, in my experience, the, the planning and zoning commission does the same thing. And, and I don't think it's invalid. That, that when the neighbors come in and force and say, um, no, we don't want this, that, that is, is a strong force for putting the garage on it.
But we had a presentation at our last meeting saying that we needed to address this to. Uh, and I've had a couple of other board of adjustment members approach me saying that.
Yeah, yeah.
They, they had some personal, I mean, while they voted with the objectors, that they, they felt that this had merit. That was my interpretation of the fact that I was contacted and saying that we need to, to address this.
It's a murky business that now.
Be murky. That's true. Yeah, that, that was an interesting case. Well, like I said, you know, they had CCNR and, I don't know. But, yeah, I don't know. I wondered if every neighbor, you know, cause like in Saginaw, they, the person came, they had a, a tiny home on wheels and their neighbors came in to support, you know, them, so I guess it just depends on what street you're on. So, right.
But we also have, we also have ones that are complaining about it right now that are turning in, um, every couple of days, calling up Nina and Amanda.
Oh, about, about that one in Saginaw?
Yeah.
No kidding? Yeah, that's fair. Yeah.
Nothing in Bisbee is ever easy.
I'm, I'm learning that.
I feel like there's gonna be a case by case. It doesn't matter where you are, right? Take all the state limits, it's gonna be a case by case. And you wanna start with neighbor outreach and a good neighbor agreement.
Yeah.
Before you come here and we are getting pitchfork, you know.
Yeah.
Yeah, and that would be the approach. I mean, there's, there's plenty of like old Bisbee, right, store characters. There's plenty of the houses dilapidated up on the hill. Good luck trying to bring a tiny in without a road. You know, get out a hell of an engineering problem solved.
Helicopter.
And if you can do it, like, it's as marvelous as the pit that they dug without, you know, crazy technology back then.
Yeah.
So can we define standards?
That might be a real good place to start.
For what we'll accept?
Yeah.
Define the standards and then make a decision on whether the locations will be case by case or whether we can identify areas where we can add that zoning?
Yeah, I mean, well, I was thinking areas, well, some areas would be like some of the empty areas, like there's a.
Right.
You know, the, a, a, you know, parcel that, you know. Trying to get affordable housing and trying to get a developer in, and we got a developer and their first thing was small lot, tiny home, small home, senior housing, you know. So I'm like, well, if we, you know, it'd be tougher, you know, to do it, but it's possible. Um, so would you like me to define standards in terms of aesthetic standards or, um?
Code.
Code, okay.
Building safety.
Building safety, okay. I guess the question is, cause I, you know, like I, I gave you the information about the, about the difference between the manufactured home and, you know, it's following the HUD codes and, you know, the, um, that's, that's safety. Um, but, um, I, you know, and the thing about the, about the RV codes is they have, it's a safety rating as well, but they have that stuff kind of under lock and key because it's kind of like proprietary information for some reason. I don't know. I could try to find it. Do you know where you could find the ANSI stuff?
Nope.
Yeah.
Uh, I, I knew.
Oh, you do? Okay.
Yeah. You, you need a subscription.
Yeah, that's what I was thinking.
Yeah, I know how to find it.
Oh, okay, good.
I'll, I'll figure out the cost.
Okay, great. So, you know, so like in terms of safety standards, I, I think that manufactured homes, again, I, I would be more inclined allowing that than tiny homes, only, you know, because it, it's not a trend. It's more of an, of a potential, somebody having a, a path to homeownership more easily than somebody wanting to, you know, live their little fantasy life in Bisbee or whatever and live in their tiny home and then pull up stakes and go to the Pacific Northwest and retire to the desert or something. I don't know, you know. So, um, so, yeah, as far as safety standards go, um, I could dig up more about it. I, I was looking at the Arizona, um, Department of Housing and they have standards for manufactured homes. They have a whole section on it. And I could look more in there. Um, I, um, you know, I, I still, um, so I can give you that information. Is there any other information particularly that you, you know, if you tell me with a look to go and try to find it, I can go and do it and just bring you back something to help you with your decision-making process, you know, so.
I don't know if this is appropriate place for this, but, um, meeting in the conversation. But if you buy land and there's another structure on it, my understanding is that that's not financeable. Is that correct? Does anyone know? And then you buy a manufactured home and maybe that is. And then you buy a manufactured home and maybe that is financeable, but you've had to put out cash for the land. So it's really not affordable for someone who's actually seeking affordable housing, cause they have to put down twenty-five, thirty thousand dollars plus that other stuff, so it makes it affordable for a developer to create potentially a rental property. And he's gonna rent it out most likely at what the market will bear unless he has some incentives to rent it out as affordable housing. So I think that's kind of a fallacy to say that that's affordable housing, maybe that's just me.
Well, you can buy a a a lot and you can get, I think, can you bundle your loans together, right? You can get a a loan to buy the lot and the home and it kind of all is rolled up into one loan.
I think you call that a bridge loan?
It's it's a process.
It's a process, I'm sure it is, I mean, just a lot I don't, you know, I still don't know, I mean.
I know there's a lot for sale for nine thousand dollars in San Jose, okay, what's the civil cost? You gotta grade the earth, you gotta tie in utility.
Yes.
I don't know, maybe another thirty, forty thousand, now you're gonna bring one of these on top of it. Maybe you net at a hundred and sixty thousand. Okay, well, what are houses for San Jose going for? Eh, about a hundred and sixty? Okay, brand new home versus a seventy-year-old home.
I mean, I I think.
But to go through the process, you're, you have to have the know-how, you know, it's 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 an obstacle.
Yeah, that's an obstacle. Well, um, what do you think about? Well, I guess I could go back to the drawing board and think of more affordable options. I mean, I was just thinking in case anybody had it, or, you know? I don't know.
And there is a real possibility of people bringing in the manufactured homes and then renting them for the same thing that everybody else is renting for.
Which will bring the rates down, right? Get more supply.
Well.
That's the idea. I mean, yeah, you're right, that's the idea.
Maybe that's the whole capitalism, right? The supply and demand.
I I do suppose that the thing, there could be more housing. It would allow more housing and it and it could temper the price because there'd be more of the supply. You know, I mean, like, I know that it may develop, or I don't know, you know, I mean, it's it's not an easy thing, but I do think that allowing more supply to exist in infill could potentially temper the prices. You know, cause I think there's just a shortage, but I don't know, you know, also maybe courting developers to develop.
I think one thing that would probably be affordable for people would be um multiplex dwellings, but.
Definitely.
I I don't know where you would put them other than, you know, way out where we have all of that land to develop.
And Hillcrest?
Well, Hillcrest, definitely, it's a rental one, yeah.
I mean, yeah.
People are looking for rentals. I mean, I I think there's affordable houses to buy if they wanna do a little fixing up.
Yeah, that's a good thing.
And people that want to put a manufactured home on land and can afford it, then that's a good option for them. But but right now, affordable housing for people, I think the most affordable housing needed is rental units. And that's, you know, multiplexes would work if we wanted.
You know, they're permitted on all of any of the R M zones.
But not R one, but if you allowed them in R one, you could like duplexes and fourplexes and, you know, that could multiply housing but without taking any more space and also tying into current utilities, so you wouldn't have to be laying out pipe, you know, out to these kind of far-flung areas. You know, and it's like a gentle density, you know, as they call it. So, yeah, allowing like more plexes and stuff, especially like in San Jose where there's a lot of big open lots like within the city, so, I mean, I don't know, you know, actually, Joe was talking about, you know.
So we do have areas where multiplexes are allowed, whereas somebody has to come in and build them.
Yeah, and and the, we were trying to incentivize that.
Yeah.
By by permitting almost anything residential to go onto the R M zoned areas, and these are areas that can that can use a little bit of an uplift too. And it it's a great incentive for people, but one thing I don't think enough people understand that 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 option is there. But I put the word out a lot too, you know, and different people and they're calling about the different, you know, cause people when they're looking at dirt in Bisbee, they're always calling me and asking me all these questions, and I would really love to see, you know, somebody taking advantage of it, because it takes one person who's got who's got the the nerve to do it, to start off with. Then other people see it as a viable option without there being that take, that first step, people don't see it as a viable option.
But, yeah, I mean, I I I think that it could be good to allow, uh, you know, duplexes or fourplexes in R one zones, cause there's a lot of, as far as comparison of like R M zones versus R one, it seems like R one is like, there's just so much more of it and there's more opportunities to fill those slots in. As opposed to like, well, I got this one little corner, San Jose or Don Louie or in Tin Town, which I feel like people would be a little wary to to do that in Tin Town at the moment, maybe not, I don't know, but you know, it's up and coming, I guess. I like it, it's tiki-taki, but, uh, you know, I'd live there, but.
I think that the ADUs would really help too.
The what now?
ADU, building ADUs.
Yeah, ADUs also.
Would be a real good thing, but it's just, I'm not happy with the the level of participation that we've got in that. I really was hoping for more.
Yeah.
What if, what if tiny houses were approved as an ADU?
That's an option.
And they'll get those real men who come up, right?
Yeah.
And make sure there's health and safety inspection.
Yeah.
The Humboldt County, that little thing I concluded in the packet about Humboldt County was essentially they, there there are rules for tiny home ADUs in the in the packet I sent.
What did we, didn't we have, we had a minimum or a maximum square footage for ADUs, do you remember?
Maximum six hundred.
Maximum six hundred.
Minimum three hundred.
So a tiny home would fit in there, wouldn't it?
Sure.
They have a manufacturer code on their property, right? Or or we make something to make it.
That's that's something to consider.
Yeah.
Because right now, the building standards set for ADUs is above tiny home standards, is that right?
The tiny home standards were adopted when we when we adopted twenty eighteen, which is another month away, there it'll be ongoing through. That that that's gonna set it the minimum at two hundred for the for tiny homes by building code, which probably would be adopted into um zoning code as such. I think in a in a fair manner, that whether it was site built or it was brought in, that two hundred square feet being the standard for the for the building code should set the standard for everything else. But two hundred is not very big and not everybody wants to live like that either.
It's a challenge.
People like to see other people live in those, but they don't wanna live in them, so they think it's a great idea for somebody else.
Where did the two hundred come from?
International, the twenty eighteen international.
Oh, okay, cause Cochise County, I think it's two hundred and ninety-six square feet is the minimum for Cochise County.
Yeah.
And I think the, who is it? Somebody, is it the s- the state rule?
That number that they came upon was extrapolated from the from the building, from the building codes of what you, what was the minimum size of the different rooms and using um a a dual occupancy in a um, in a a, I'm trying to, efficiency apartment was the standard that they that they came up with that. And I think it's really, that's really valid what they did. And we've we've been using that as our standard too, because because I was, um, when it was explained to me, I said, yeah, that that all mixed it, it was really well done.
That's a policy that me and Joe wanna make is three hundred would be the minimum.
Yeah.
That's plenty small.
It's plenty small. Not many takers for three hundred.
Well, the thing is, but I I gotta say, you know, if you allowed something like that, you know, like I saw where was that? This, where, okay, so that right there is a manufactured home. And I think it's about four or five hundred square feet, it's called Casa de Cielo or something. And it's sixty, I think base price is like sixty-something thousand dollars. And it's like, maybe like four, yeah, and it's got a loft, and it's like, I don't know, if you're having three or four or five, you know, just like it's like you could, that is a for, something that you could do that people would wanna live in, that could be a good ADU, you know? It doesn't have to be tiny, I'm not quite sure. Sometimes I wonder if it's a minimalist thing, people were just like, they're like, oh, a hundred square feet, I did it, check me out, I read all, everything's over my underwear and a pair of pants, you know, so.
So the thought process, so I I follow a lot of random stuff, and three hundred is great. You got a place to cook, a place to take a shower, a place to sleep, and then you just put a three hundred foot outdoor deck is your living space, we have great weather.
Yeah, that's true.
Now you have six hundred square living space, is it really that small? You know, it's it's a mindset shift.
Yeah.
And that's three hundred, three hundred's a great space to keep clean, you know, you can clean, deep clean your house in thirty minutes.
Okay, so the takeaway for me then is.
I think we gotta figure out what, where, and how.
What, where, and how, okay, we could potentially do, start with ADUs, ease people into the idea, I don't know. Overlays, potential, making it easy to do overlays in the areas that people wanna maybe do some stuff. We, so how do you feel about the difference between overlay versus a rezoning versus allowing more uses in R one zoning? How do you feel about those three? What would everybody, would everybody feel more comfortable with potentially pushing to the universe? That was some hippie talk, I'm sorry.
I feel like you talked about this the next meeting.
We're gonna talk about it some more.
Yeah, I think you've gotta kind of review what, how it's kind of laid out right now, like the what uses.
Okay, I I'll do that.
To understand like how is it structured right now and is there context that could be added?
Okay, um, other other municipalities, what they've done, okay, I'm I'll look up some municipalities, um, a lot of municipalities have actually basically eliminated single-family R one zoning to allow multifamily everywhere throughout the whole city. That's a, that's, that's the thing that's happening right now, Portland, Oregon, Austin, Texas. Yeah, high influx cities. Anyway, but yeah, I'll I'll look, I'll I'll give you a rundown of the current uses, bless you. I'll I'll give you some some other stuff for precedence to compare to and and see if I can find information about how that's worked for them so that you all can see and make a decision and feel comfortable with it, you know, whatever you decide to do, just so you'll be well-informed. Does that work for everybody?
Well, I think when we discussed this years ago, uh, and we adopted the the zone for small, what is, what's that called? The potential of the zone where you have a park and have smaller units. But we went that approach because really it's developers needs to initiate it rather than the city, and I think there's kind of a few for us to go out and identify where's, where is this possible? And to take action, um, to rezone and so forth, to allow that. But instead, I guess to encourage developers uh, to to come in and and identify an area that we then would would facilitate. Once the developer comes to us rather than we identify.
Alternate lodging park.
Oh, right.
If you could get them, I mean, I don't know, dude, how many alternate lodging parks do we have in town?
How many people took that bait?
Yeah, that's a problem, I guess.
Yeah, well, that's the whole point. But again, it's fewer for us to initiate, identify a specific area for that, and you're just inviting negative reaction from the community, from the neighborhood. And whereas if someone's coming in and proposing something, cause I know there are individuals, particularly in terms of cheap retirement areas in terms of the, you know, what was the term there where you have a little village? You know, where you have small houses and they're all interconnected and so forth, and I think, you know, that people are talking about that, but whether or not anybody has the means to move forward with that is another question, but.
Right. Um, yeah, well, I can think of two parcels that maybe that issues the future about that, only the, you know, like the one you'd mentioned, Kathleen Buchanan, and then this other place on Melody. I mean, that the developer has been talking, proposing some, something like that, so. It's a challenge, so, anyway, but yeah, okay. I will come back to you and.
Okay.
Thanks for listening to my spiel.
You'll bring something more to us then for stimulation?
Yeah.
Again, item three, then there's further discussion regarding the general plan, and you providing something for us to
Yeah.
react to, so is there anything more to
Yeah.
talk about there?
Uh, so, um, I brought you these, and you actually, you know what, you have that, when you have, when you have it in your hand, I'd say, take one of these other ones, cause there's more room to take notes on those ones, that's when I that's my first printout one that doesn't have a lot of note, room for notes, but, um if you, if you can, open.
So there's two different versions of this?
They're the same, but but one, the orientation of the printing is just a little bit different. So, anyway, yeah, if you'd like to, again, you know, just view those and address anything that's of a concern to you, you know, so just kind of read over it and just see if you can find anything that you you know needs to be updated or that you feel like um could be tweaked or changed in some way, policy-wise, um, you know, new developments, things that that were written, you know, cause a lot of them have been written in two thousand and three, and so we're, you know, it's just such a vastly different world now compared to then, I think. So that's something to consider for those ones. Um, also, um I uh, I know that we had some community stakeholders identified by you all last time. I I'm I'm gonna send you a document sometime pretty soon, and it's gonna have some of the stakeholders that you've identified, and if you can think of any more that you want to identify and some issues that I want to address, uh, like in terms of, cause I know that you all said dark skies, streetlights, fire-waist communities and such, and I was thinking of some other potential stakeholder groups like um CIGO, the Legacy Foundation, uh, the Bisbee Library, uh, neighborhood associations, Camp Naco, uh, Spanish language community. And then I was thinking about some issues of you mentioned fire hazard, and so I'm still thinking of like other public health in terms of like what we wanna do in terms of public health, like any issues, and I'm gonna keep on exploring that a bit. And um, things about infrastructure, which I'll talk with Public Works about. See, green, green storm water infrastructure, so things like water catchment basins and things to think about like that. Food insecurity and food deserts, there's several, um, there's several um documents in Bisbee and the website, on the Bisbee website, it's like plans and studies. And so I'm like wanting to integrate some of those things, like they have like a climate and environmental um plan that they that the city adopted, I think, several years ago, and then the Bisbee area mobility master plan, so I'm thinking about um maybe kind of folding some of those ideas into our general plan. Formal housing is one too, that I wanna think about and think of maybe a potential person, I'm guessing that Danielle Boucher would be that, would be that person uh, as a stakeholder. Um, and then yeah, that's about it. So I'll just send you guys a document in the next, and then you can take a look at it and think about some stuff to talk about at the next planning and zoning meeting. And this thing I sent you here, again, is one of those things where I'm not expecting you to go crazy with filling out those. Just anything that stands out to you in particular that needs to be updated or changed, so. How do you feel about that? Do you open that? Okay, good deal. That sounds good. Six twenty-four?
Any further staff or commission comments?
I wanted to say that the, um, no, we had several of, I know that we had several of the of the commissioners who were excused, I called them and said they were not going to be here. I I talked to um, to to Mike Alvin myself, and I and I think you mentioned another one to me in annual. and I, and I think you mentioned another one, Jimmy Inamo.
Oh, Douglas, Doug Taylor.
I mean, as far as, that they, that they were excused, not absent.
Yeah, they were excused.
Can I incorporate that into the? Anything else? We have a motion for adjournment?
I move we adjourn.
We are adjourned then.